All right, so thank you, everybody, for bearing with us for the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 28th, 2021. I'm just going to read a few parameters here. Mark will take role, and then we'll turn the meeting over to our chair. So this is a web-based call. We'll be operating under the following procedures. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. A recording of the video will be available within 24 hours and will be posted to the Town of Waterford's Planning Department website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for the meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they're speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or visual disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them if the disruption continues. We won't be using the chat feature tonight, so please don't attempt. We do appreciate your attendance at the meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, you can certainly call our staff at 860-444-5813 between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Monday to Friday, and we're here to help with that. I'll turn it over to Mark.
Okay, I'll take the role. Greg Masad.
Here.
John Bashaw.
Here.
Karen Barnett.
Here.
Ken Patrini. Ken Patrini.
Here.
Joe DiBono. Tim Bleesdale.
Here.
Did we do Karen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. We have all five members, so we don't need any alternates. How about item number two, approval of the September 28th, 2021 meeting minutes? Someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the meeting minutes from September 14, 2021.
I'll second.
Right, just as a note, there is an agenda issue. It says approval of the September 28th minutes, but that's the September 14th minutes. Abby, if that makes a difference at all, but the motions been made to accept the September 14th minutes.
Oh, sorry, August 24th, my mistake.
No, no. September, September 14th, but on the agenda, it says September 28th. So the motion is to approve the September 14th meeting minutes for item number two, and it's been made in second at all in favor?
I
I opposed. All right, those have been approved. Item number three, receipt of applications. Do we have any applications?
We have no new applications to review.
Okay. Item number four, application review. PL 21-11, the request of the estate of Constance Rice, owner, Cohansy Partners LP applicant for site plan approval to locate a multifamily development at 908 Hartford Turnpike I-MF Zone in accordance with sections 16 and 22 of the zoning regulations and as shown on plans entitled Pequot Apartments 908 Hartford Turnpike. Actions required by 111821. And who do we have here tonight, Abby, as the applicant?
I believe that Mike Ott is representing the applicant team to start.
Okay, Mr. Ott.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Mike Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Summerhill Civil Engineers in Madison. We have with us tonight Harold Foley and Kandra Swayze from the applicant Cohansy. The architect, Mike Kleffner, has called in. The last, to help identify him, if you need it, the last four digits of his phone number are 7041. Looks like he might be the only one calling in, I think. And the landscape architect, John Tunskey, is here from Weston and Sampson Engineers. And our traffic engineer, Dave Sullivan from SLR Consultants, is here with us also tonight. Abby, would you be sharing your screen and showing the plans?
Mike, if it's easier, I can certainly give it to you, but it might be simpler right now to just go through the plans.
Okay, okay, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. So this is the obviously, the first time we've appeared before you. We have received our approval from the Conservation Commission, our inland wetland permit, and this afternoon, we appeared before the Design Review Board for the first time. So just a, just a quick overview that the purple outline is the site. It's approximately 16 and a half acres. It's owned, as the chairman had read, by the estate of Constance Rice. The, the target Plaza is to the east that Abby is showing. And I, and I apologize, I can't remember the name of the large shopping center, although I've been there a million times across the street. That's where Panera Bread is and Big By. So Jordan Brook flows through the site, through the southern portion of the site. And a tributary to Jordan Brook flows through the site from east to west, just below the planned development area, which is up near Hartford Turnpike, State Route 85. So Abby, if you could maybe, that'd be great, yeah, maybe scroll out to the first, yeah, thank you. So the, excuse me, the proposal is to provide, to construct a multifamily development, two buildings, two residential buildings, providing 40 one and two-bedroom rental apartments and a small community building that you can see at the bottom of the developed area. The parking is all behind the buildings. The site slopes from Hartford Turnpike down to the tributary to Jordan Brook. So the site access drive descends from Hartford Turnpike between the two buildings and down to the parking area at the, at the building's lower levels, the residential building's lower levels. Sidewalks on both sides, as you can see, of the parking area. A sidewalk that comes back up the entrance drive to State Route 85. Typical parking lot and driveway lighting, exterior lighting. There's a full landscape plan that John Tunskey will, will talk about in a couple of minutes. There is a, a fire department fire lane in front of the, what would be the Easterly Building. I think we called it Building Number Two. And that, that'll be constructed with open cell pavers so that turf grass can grow in those, in the openings in the pavers so that it won't, it won't be bituminous pavement, and we think it'll aesthetically, it'll look, it'll look a lot better. We have showed the fire hydrants that the Fire Marshal asked us to show at their locations. Earlier this week, we received that information from him. The stormwater management system, excuse me, consists of typical catch basin and storm sewer collection conveyance system and subsurface stormwater detention system below the Easterly portion of the parking lot behind Building Two, and also a stormwater infiltration basin just outside of the parking lot to the south of Building Two and to the east of the community building, to the right there where Abby has her cursor. Fairly, fairly straightforward, I think, site design. I think that might, all the, all the utilities I should, I should note are coming from the highway right-of-way. There is sewer and water in the lower portion of the site, in the southern portion of the site. We are not connecting to those, those cross-country facilities, so all utilities will come from the Hartford Turnpike right-of-way, and they'll, they'll all be installed underground. We have been in contact with the Connecticut DOT since July. We've, we've sent them these plans. We've been in contact with them as their review has progressed. It's still in progress. Dave Sullivan, our traffic engineer, can talk about that a little bit, a little more, a little later. I think that's a, just a, you know, a general overview of the site. I'd, I'd be glad to answer any questions the commission might have at this point, or if not, I'll turn it over to Mike Kleffner, the architect, to, to go over the building designs.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ott?
Okay. Do you want to turn it over to who?
To Mike Kleffner, who is the architect from Wallace Architects LLC, and he's the, he's the, he has called in.
Okay.
Yes, this is Mike Kleffner with Wallace Architects. As Mike said, we're the architect of record for the project, working with this development team on this being our fourth project in the area. And as Mike Ott said, we've got two residential buildings, 40 apartments. We, we did go through the Design Review Board process this afternoon. And as Mike said, there, there was unanimous approval with three conditions that we plan to take care of. Mike said there is a standalone community building. There is conditioned corridors for access to all of the residential apartment units. They will be provided with a key fob entry to each of those secure, secure corridors with a call system on the south side of the building for visitors to, to be granted access to the buildings. Site is, is fully accessible, all the way from the parking area up to the four accessible units that we have in, to each, in each of the residential buildings. Access to across the drive to the community building, over to the dumpster enclosure, and, and all the way up to Hartford Turnpike. It is a walkout-style building design to work with the natural topography. We do have accessible route built into the project to gain access at floor level on the south side at the first level and the north side at the second level. And like Mike Ott had said, available to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions?
John, just a quick question. I can't tell from the drawings. Was there any consideration of incorporating any kind of solar panels onto this large roof area?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that. This project design incorporates one of the, the most progressive energy and sustainability regulations guidelines. It's FIES is the, the name of the, of the program, which stands for Passive House Institute of the United States. And there is incorporation of solar panels on the south, south roof line that I believe is, is part of the documents there. I apologize, I can't see what, what's being presented, but it, we do have solar panels on the south, south side of the buildings. Trying to pay some sensitivity to the, to the north side, the most visible side from Hartford Turnpike, but, but all of that infrastructure utility items would be on the south, south side of, of that main roof ridge line.
Anything else, John?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, Karen?
I just had one or two questions. Do you consider the main entrance to these buildings to be from the parking lot or the 85 side of the building?
We do consider the parking lot side to be the main entrance for these buildings, but with this being a residential development, the Fair Housing Act does apply to this, to this development, and all, all units that are accessed at, at from street level, based upon the existing topography, need to be on an accessible route. So the north side would be for, although we have all of our, our four dedicated accessible units on the south side with parking locations immediately adjacent to those units, there could be accessible entrance via the sidewalk and the road coming between the buildings, the sidewalk adjacent to that, to to get access on that north side as well, but more of a secondary entrance.
Okay, and then are, are you planning on, and this is just my, like, experience with planned communities, are you planning on, like, specific signage for telling people how to go? I noticed that there's no, like, internal cross hallway to connect if you go in the wrong door. What kind of signage are you planning to help people get where they're going?
So we would have some wayfinding signage at, at each of the entrances on the south side of the building, indicating the apartment unit numbers entered at each of those corridor locations. And then you know, fire apparatus, building identification would be on the north sides of the building, so emergency personnel could, could quickly figure out which, which building they were going to, and then locate the, the actual unit numbers on the south side of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tim? Tim, do you have any questions? All right, Ken?
I'm just kind of a follow-up question to the accessibility and kind of the parking calculation. Just wanted to know if either the architect or engineer can go through those calculations, and I don't see, per se, maybe I'm just not seeing the symbol on the map, but you said there was four accessible apartments. I don't see any handicap parking unless I'm missing something.
I, I could, this is Mike Ott. I could answer the, the second part of your question. Abby, would you be able to zoom in on the, on the parking lot, if you could? Thanks, thanks. So we, if you'll, you'll notice for three cross-hatched areas, those are the aisles for what we, what we now call reserved parking spaces. We have, we have added, as a result of staff comments, we have added the international symbol of accessibility pavement marking to each of those four spaces. So you, we did not, we did not want to submit those revised sheets at late date to not cause confusion, but we did address that comment that came from town staff.
Is one of them, I mean, I know it's the regulation from the building code, are, are one of them considered van accessible?
Yes, in way this parking lot laid out, all of them are. All of them are van accessible. There's details on the drawing set for the dimensions of the spaces as well as the, the hatchet and symbols required, results of details for the required signage, including the subclay that goes below the reserved parking space sign that indicates it's van accessible.
Feet wide.
I apologize, I lost you there for a second.
What I mean by van accessible, that handicap van accessible parking space is 16 feet wide?
Yes, they are. Yeah, you're correct. The requirement is a minimum of eight of space and eight feet of aisle. And, and we actually have more than that. We have 10-foot spaces and 10-foot aisles on all of these spaces.
Okay, I got you.
You had a, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember the first part of your question.
No, I was just asking, as you said, there was, and there was 40 units, 41-bedroom, two-bedroom mix. I was just curious, the parking calculations, you know, what are your, what's your total parking count, and how does it compare to the, the regulations and total spaces?
Okay, um, so on the, on the title sheet of the drawing set, there is, in the zoning schedule, there's, the parking is, calculations are laid out, and I'm, I'm going by memory, but I believe we have a total of 72 total parking spaces, which meets the zoning regulation, I'm sorry, excuse me, the zoning regulation parking requirements. I think you'll, I think you'll find that on the left-hand side, I think, of the title sheet of the drawing set.
The 72 includes the handicap?
It, it does. The, the reserved spaces, yes. On the, on the site layout plan, there, the, we actually show the, the numbers in each bay of parking. We actually identify the, the numbers, so it's easy to add them up, and you'll, I think you'll see that that, that it totals 72.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ken?
Nope, that's it for now.
Okay, Mr. Ott, do you have anybody else?
Um, yes, I'm John, Jonathan Tunskey from Weston and Sampson, the landscape architect. I, it'd be great if, if he could go over the landscape plans with the commission.
Great, sure. Thank you, Mike. Again, my name's John Tunskey, landscape architect of Weston and Sampson. So generally, this plan has a significant amount of trees planted. Once we get to that page, you'll see the abundance of the trees. Every tree is greater than eight feet tall is the minimum specified. And we have a mix of what I would call the medium and large shade trees, and medium being more ornamental. And we provided some screening along the property lines to provide some buffer space. Generally, all areas will be seeded with lawn, and then some other areas where there's steep slopes or the retention basin, or the area to the south is going to be seeded with a native mix, basically to stabilize the slope, and then that will just kind of return to natural conditions. That's the general overview of the planting plan.
Any questions for Mr. Tunskey? No questions. Mr. Ott, do you have anybody else?
Um, Mr. Sullivan, Dave Sullivan is here from SLR Consulting, and we've submitted a traffic report with the application, and maybe Dave could just speak about, just give you a, a quick overview and answer any questions you might have.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike. Dave Sullivan with SLR. I manage the traffic and transportation planning group there. We did do a traffic study as requested. The traffic study was fairly traditional. We looked at existing conditions. Then we evaluate the future conditions, including sightlines and the amount of trips that will be generated. Then we establish what traffic would be like with and without the development, and we do some analysis to determine levels of service. In this particular case, and most of our jobs lately, the most challenging thing is establishing the existing conditions because of COVID and the impact that that has on traffic volumes. In this particular case, we did do new counts, but we also had a bevy of other counts that were done pre-COVID that were provided to us by DOT. We looked at our counts, compared them with the pre-COVID counts, conversed with DOT, and established what we call the, the base traffic volumes, which in fact were from 2018, and it was based on the Waterford Station-built condit- conditions. So DOT suggested we use those volumes. So we did that. Then we estimated what the traffic would be for this development, and we used the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's a low, relatively low traffic generator, multi-family residential. The 40 units, we estimate, would generate about between 20 and 25 trips during the morning and afternoon peak hours. We also looked at the driveway and to determine the safety and the availability of sightlines. To do that, we had established what the travel speeds were on Hartford Turnpike. While it's posted 40 miles an hour, the average speed in the northbound direction is 48 miles per hour, northbound or westbound, depending on how you look at it, and the average speed, southbound is 42 and a half miles per hour. But we like to look at the 85th percentile speed, which is, rather than average, which is the 50th percentile, 85th is the speed that 85% of the traffic is traveling at or below. The 85th percentile speed is 54, over 54 miles an hour in the north or westbound direction. And then the southbound or eastbound direction, it was between 49 and 50 miles per hour. So that means we need sightlines of 600 feet looking at the the northbound vehicles, or looking to the right and looking to the left, we need 545 feet. We did our measurements, and in fact, can get that, that as safe sightlines in both directions, assuming we're properly cleared of brush and things of that nature along the shoulder. The last thing to do was to look at the level of service of the driveway. The the vehicles entering will enter at very good levels of service. Levels of service are, are generally between A and F, somewhere of school grades, and in the morning, you would be at level service A entering this, this site, and level service B in the afternoon, exiting the site in the morning, B level service C, and in the afternoon, when traffic is much higher on Hartford Turnpike, you would be at level service E. Level of service E is not a function of the traffic that this site is generating, but a function of the traffic on Hartford Turnpike. So in conclusion, the, we saw no level of service impacts and no safety impacts specifically related to the availability of sightlines. That's, that's our summary. And in terms of DOT, they are in fact reviewing this. I sent them a set of plans and all of our traffic analyses. They're reviewing those, and we'll get back to us with any comments or questions they may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
I did have a couple of questions, or we go one. So the one thing, I mean, the, the concern, obviously DOT hasn't reviewed it. They haven't. I don't know, have turn lanes been discussed, at least, you know, crossing over from the, I guess it would be the eastbound lane going. And I don't know, that's something that, I know, and, and the reason why I bring that question up is I know during the holiday traffic, you didn't mention anything about a holiday during the holiday time of year, which is obviously an abnormal traffic, but I do know that traffic backs up from crossroad all the way But I do know that traffic backs up from crossroad all the way to Target and how that's going to impact this development.
Um, so to to answer your your first question on the left turn lane, um, we did do a preliminary screening of the need for left turn lane. Um, and there are formulas um um that uh we rely on. Um, the volume of traffic is so low, we did not meet those particular criteria. Um, there is room out there to stripe a left turn lane. I imagine that's one of the things DOT will be looking at. Um, so certainly if they need us to re-stripe that uh uh the painted island in that area, we can do that. Um, but again, it didn't meet the initial screening because of the low volume of left turns, uh but but certainly we're aware of the the possibility.
Now, was was the holiday traffic, was that considered in any of the your evaluation or your study?
It it was not. Um, typically, we try not to um design or um analyze for those um peak conditions. Um, the old rule of thumb used to be the thirtieth highest hour, um, which certainly falls outside of the uh the holiday uh holiday peak. And we also are aware that, um, you know, for instance, on um a Black Friday, there would be nothing to design for. Um, what we would be doing is uh uh just relying on people, uh people's goodwill um for turns in and out, and that's that's likely on Black Friday, what uh what occurs all up and down Hartford Turnpike.
Any else, Ken?
No, that's it.
Tim, John, Karen, anybody? Okay, and look, is there any other questions for you, Mrs. Sullivan?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. No, I think we're, I think we're good. Um be be glad to, if if the commission has any more questions, be glad to try to answer them.
So I think we will uh discuss this and see if we can can motion formulated. Abby, I have one question for you with respect to uh the DOT review. Is our approval contingent upon their approval?
Typically not. So typically, the the DOT review happens post municipal approval. Certainly, as as I think the engineer is, as Mike has indicated, that that conversation um, and if as I spoke to said, the conversation has been ongoing, but we don't typically get their review until after approval. And then if there are, if there's any modification to the site plan that comes out of the DOT review um that would require a site plan modification, then they would have to come back for that to make sure it's consistent. But that's that's really it. There there's not, um, in fact, there's historically, there's um it would, there hasn't been a lot of a lot of coordination formally. Certainly, the informal conversation happens, but there's not typically formal review at the DOT level until the town has weighed in.
Okay, what happens if we do approve it and the state uh wants something and the developer doesn't do it? What happens there?
Well, they have to to, in order to to gain access onto the road, um, this is to say a state highway, they would have to meet the state conditions. And so they they simply wouldn't get an access permit to be able to to do the construction to connect the development to the road.
Okay, there's already a curb cut though, right?
There there may be a curb cut, but there would be an enforcement issue with the state of Connecticut at that point that would would sort of trump. Um, you know, even having that that sort of local approval, because it it has to, it has to go through that that state approval to get to to maintain that access. So and and because there may be a curb cut, but the modification necessary to support the site development itself still requires work within the state right away.
Okay, so has it has an encroachment permit been submitted to DOT yet?
If if I could, um, um, so the the contractor um actually submits an encroachment permit application. What we do on the design during the design phase is um submit our the plans and the traffic report as we did uh to the DOT so they can at least start their review and then complete it as that be described. And then when the when the contractor goes to submit his encroachment permit application, uh, e- everything will be said. It'll just be an administrative process at that point. So that 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 actual application has to wait um in until until local approvals are in place and the DOT has completed their review, and then the contractor can submit an encroachment permit application.
Typically, if DOT in initial conversation finds a fatal flaw with something, they will typically reach out to the town and explain, you know, that there will not be access granted, or there there's a there's a specific problem. Um, but it but in this case, that that has not happened.
I just have one last question. I don't know if this is in the document somewhere and I missed it, but are any of the units in this complex considered affordable housing?
Harold, if you want to answer, this is Mike Cleftner, Wallace Architects, but Harold, if you want to answer that.
Yes, that's correct. We have uh thirty-two units that are going to be under some at the eighty percent AMI and the remaining portion under sixty percent AMI and remaining twenty percent is going to be at market.
Thank you.
With respect to the lighting, Abby, we don't have any. We're gonna be waiting on a lighting plan?
Right, there there was in the original seminal documents, the the photometrics um were were not there. And so I think Mark has already had the conversation with folks and and he can go through. That's that's one of the conditions that he was recommending in the staff report um was the final submittal of the photometric to to prove that there is no trespass of of light.
Just to, just to be clear, if I could, we we submitted an exterior um lighting photometric plan, but as Abby said, um, I think Mark picked up or or staff picked up in their review that it did not show the light levels that as Abby just said at the property line. So that's that's the revision we had to make. So on the 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 MEP engineer has has already made that review.
Everybody ready to make a motion?
A couple of if I can, if I can interject here.
Yeah, Mark. Who's speaking?
Mark was gonna provide the staff review of the project and then go from there.
Sure, thanks, Mark.
Um. Excuse me. You have in your package a staff report um for this for this project. I also um submitted a copy as well to the applicant and his agent, so they've had a chance to review this um as well. A couple of items that I'd like to point out is uh they had met, the applicant had met with the design review board this afternoon. And there were, there were a couple of conditions uh or recommendations, I should say, from the design review board for the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider uh in their in their action. Uh, one was uh to provide shutters on the first floor windows uh on the side of the buildings that face Hartford Turnpike. Uh, if you notice on the design plans and the renderings, there are shutters on the second story windows. The first story doesn't, they don't have shutters. Uh, that was that was discussed, and the applicant was amenable to that. Second was that the the exterior light fixtures on the pole lights outside, uh, we're looking to change those styles to be more appropriate to the design of the building. Uh, they were a lack of a better term, a colonial style. Uh, but the building wasn't really, um, doesn't really reflect that that colonial type of style. So uh there was, there was changes that they had requested to the design of the light fixture styles uh to be more more appropriate to the to the building style and the the project. The project overall, the lighting remains the same, it's just the the uh design, the uh design of the light head. There are conditions on the plan. I mean, I'm I'm sorry, there are conditions in the uh report. Those conditions, like I said, we discussed with the with the applicant's agent. Um, I haven't heard anything back from them that uh any of these are 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 earth shattering or that they cannot meet. So with that.
I think I think also one one element of the design review board did want to pass on to the commission was the naming of the project, um, and specifically the name Pequot Apartments, and whether that was the most appropriate choice, um, you know, sort of given the the fact of the the Pequot Tribe being in existence, and then the historic reference to most lands entitled Pequot were in sort of New London proper, less less so the outer area. Um, but there was, there was certainly a a conversation that was had at Design Review Board and a desire to recommend to the commission to the applicant with the understanding that the naming of the property is certainly within the applicant's purview, but that was something that they had hoped that folks would consider.
We're we're amenable to that, by the way, just making a comment in regards to the naming. Uh, we 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 did name it as such o- originally, or that was the intended name, really out of respect. So if it if if it has the, if it's having the counter effect, uh, we're certainly agreeable to changing the name.
So um that is the summary of my of my report. If the commission has any questions on that, they'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions for Abby or Mark? Anybody want to entertain a motion?
Uh, Greg, if I if I could just interject for a second before we uh start deliberating or anything. I should have mentioned this at the outset, but I discovered this afternoon that I have a conflict of interest on this application, so I won't be participating in our deliber deliberations or voting or anything.
Hey, thank you.
All right, this is John Bashra. I'll take a stab at a motion. I'm gonna move that we uh approve uh the application PL twenty-one dash eleven. And that um we've we uh adopt the findings set for findings one through six set forth in the September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one memorandum uh prepared by Mark for this particular project. Uh, I'm simply just mentioning those items rather than reading each of them into the record. Uh, I hope that's sufficient. And that we also approve the application subject to the conditions set forth in that same memorandum, conditions one through nine, and in addition there to um adding two additional conditions, one being that the applicant comply with all of the design review board conditions that have been discussed uh this evening and that the application also be subject to the receipt of DOT approval and compliance with any DOT terms and conditions.
Uh, John, for 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 clarification sake, could could we list or could we run through those conditions uh versus suggestions of the design review board?
Uh, yeah, I, um, somebody may have to help me with that. I remember.
Yeah, Mark, do you have those?
Yes, um, first, the first condition of the design review board was to provide shutters on first floor windows facing Hartford Turnpike. Uh, the second condition uh was to modify the light fixture style to be more appropriate to the building style and the development overall.
Okay, so were those the conditions you were talking about, John?
Yes, and so I'll amend my motion to to include include those specific conditions that Mark just read into the record.
Is there a second?
This is Karen. I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve PL dash twenty-one dash eleven in in uh line with Mark's staff report with the two extra conditions of the design review board. Uh, just before we take a vote, is there any other discussion? I do have one question. Uh, can I ask the applicant, Abby, at this point?
Can you open a clarification, sure?
Yeah, was there a reason why you didn't include the shutters on the first floor? Is there a reason for that?
Uh, this is Mike Cleftner with Wallace Architects again. You know, we were trying to to uh bring uh uh, I guess, uh, notice or or bring attention to entryways. That was some of the color distinguished distinguishing features that we added at the entries and the roof overhangs to provide some some weather cover. Um, but uh, you know, I I think we were adding some decorative elements to uh uh try to be consistent with some of the commercial development around there. Um, but uh uh, you know, limiting the shutters uh uh to the upper level was was uh uh, you know, related to the central core of the buildings and and uh the aesthetic that we thought was appropriate, but like like, uh, I believe Mark said before, we're we're certainly amenable to adding additional shutters on the north side on the first floor. And don't, we don't believe that it will uh detract in any way from from the original design proposed.
Thank you. Any other discussion by the the commission before we take a vote? Okay, how about all in favor of um John's motion? So you can probably saying aye.
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 Ken, Karen, four to nothing, with Tim uh abstaining from the discussion and the vote. Thank you for uh your presentation this evening and good luck with the project. Uh, looks like a nice project for us and for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. All right, let's move on to item number five. Any correspondence?
No, no, we don't.
Okay, just so we don't uh forget this, can we take Mark's memo to us to add that Mylar uh right here at under correspondence? Did everybody get his uh Mark's memo on the Lombardi uh re-subdivision?
Sure.
Can somebody make a motion to add this?
Uh, so moved.
Hey, uh, Tim has made the motion to add the Lombardi subdivision application PL dash twenty-one dash nine corrected filing of the Mylars to the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
May seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, five, five to nothing to add it to the agenda. Um, and then we just need a motion to authorize me to endorse the corrected plans. I already endorsed the original plans.
This is John. Uh, I I move that we uh authorize the chairman to endorse the corrected plan as submitted um for PL twenty-one dash nine.
I'll second that.
Motion made by John, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thanks. I didn't want that to slip through the cracks tonight. So now we are on uh number six, the draft housing plan presentation by Glenn Cholder.
Yep, and Glenn, I am having some trouble making you the host right now. Uh, I'm not sure what is going on with that. So I don't seem to have that option. You're you're muted, you're muted, Glenn.
Yep, thank you. I tried click. It doesn't let share its green, Abby, so um.
The I'm trying to find the the normal place where the tool is to let me make you the host does not seem to be functional right now, and I'm not sure why.
If you want to add, I can uh email you a PDF and then you host. Is that fine?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, if everybody just give us a minute here.
It's on its way. Anything, yeah?
Uh, yeah, yep, uh, just came in.
Perfect.
Wait up now, perfect. All right, let me. Move this back over. Here we go.
Beautiful. Thank you. Hi, members of the commission. I'm Glenn Cholder from Planometrics. Been working with Waterford for many years in terms of plans and conservation and developments and. Work on zoning regulations and also now the opportunity to work with the commission on the preparation of an affordable housing plan. Can you go to the next slide, Abby? I think you skipped one. There you go. Thank you. So an affordable housing plan is a new requirement under Connecticut state law. In twenty seventeen, the legislature passed a law that said. Every community has to pair an affordable housing plan. Which will specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. And going forward, the plan needs to be updated at least once every five years. And as you're probably aware, a. Plan of conservation and development is updated once every ten years. So the magic of the twenty twenty-two date is that that's five years from twenty seventeen, which is when the public act was adopted. Next. So with this requirement for increasing the number of affordable housing developments in the community, the question is, well, what is that? And there's two types of housing which fall under the statutory. Construction for this, one of which is housing receiving financial assistance from the state or federal government. Or tenants receiving rental assistance, and that's called assisted housing. There's also another category which is commonly known as a set aside development. This is where units are restricted. And contain restrictions that the units will sell or rent at affordable prices. For at least the next forty years from the date of approval. Next. So the question is, what, what does affordable mean? What, what, what is this all about? And people feel that the phrase affordable housing means that it's housing for poor people or housing for section eight. Or housing for other terminologies. And actually, that's not, not quite the case. The way that the statutes are set up, it's meant to be housing for people earning typical wages. Eighty percent of area median income, and as you heard the applicant earlier this evening. Their development has quite a number of units at eighty percent of area median income. So this really means that a three-person household earning sixty-four thousand dollars would be eligible for a two-bedroom unit. At fifteen hundred dollars a month. And that's either both adults being wage earners at about sixteen dollars an hour. Or one wage earner at about thirty-two dollars an hour. So it's housing that requires income, but it's intended to kind of get people started. Provide them with housing which is appropriate for their needs and which is affordable to give them a chance to get started. And at the bottom of this slide, we have some indications based on the. Current. Income and expense and other information from the State Department of Housing, what the monthly rentals and sale prices are. Next. So the Affordable Housing Plan is. An attempt to start to address this. Based on Waterford's specific information and strategies based on our research and investigation. The report itself is broken down into five key parts. The first two are just an introduction about what we're doing, kind of similar to what I just went over with the commission. And then some background data in terms of Waterford's unique situation. Back in the spring, Abby conducted a online community survey. And I think the commission's seen those results, but we report them again in the plan so that people can see. What their neighbors and friends have said. And the section at the end on strategies and implementation. So next. And part of the reason for a housing plan is that everybody needs housing. Everybody wants housing that's affordable to them. It's available when they need it and they have some options or choices so they can choose different locations or different configurations of housing. And those types of things. This triangular graphic here is what's called Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and it really identifies what, what people. Basic needs are from things as fundamental as air and water, food and shelter. All the way up to housing or providing an opportunity for people to realize their full potential and to. Contribute to their community, including things like serving on the planning and zoning. Next. And, and part of the reason for housing is that. People's housing needs, society has gotten more diverse and people's housing needs become more diverse as well. The median age in Connecticut and in Waterford is higher than it's ever been in the past. So we have many more older residents. We have younger families starting out, we're struggling. Even in the COVID bump of real estate prices to get the down payment that's needed to acquire or purchase housing. Rental housing is, is expensive, et cetera. What we found as part of our research is that eighty-six percent of Waterford's housing inventory is in one flavor of housing, and that's single-family detached housing. And even Baskin Robbins has thirty-one flavors. And so it's possible. And likely that different types of housing and more housing diversity can enhance Waterford and it enhances communities around the country. And these are some things that we could look at and consider moving forward. Next. In the report, we looked at the rental rates, what people are charging for. Or paying for rent in Waterford. We looked at sale prices. And Waterford has fewer units selling and renting at, in the lower price brackets than other communities in the county and the state. But we also found some unique situations in Waterford. About twenty-eight percent of households are what are called Alice households in Waterford. And these are existing residents in Waterford who are. Asset limited, that's where the AL comes from, income constrained because they're not making a lot of money, but they're employed. And so these are the people that actually can struggle quite a bit with housing costs. And again, it's about twenty-eight percent of the population, according to studies done by the United Way. And while they make more than the poverty level, they're making less than what it really, the basic cost of living. In Waterford and in New London County. In addition, from census and other information, we're able to look into what people are actually spending on housing. And about twenty-four percent of all households in Waterford are considered to be housing cost burdened. Because they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on house in the future. Next. So Waterford doesn't. Waterford has four hundred and nineteen state-recognized affordable housing units. And this is important because, as you're probably familiar, under state law, we have the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. Where a community with less than ten percent of its housing stock meeting the state-recognized criteria. Is subject to the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. So to meet that threshold, Waterford would need roughly twice as many you affordable housing units as it has today. But surprisingly, Waterford has four hundred and nineteen units. Most people in Waterford probably don't even realize that we have four hundred and nineteen affordable units in town. There are a hundred and twenty-three assisted units, thirty rental assistance units. We can talk about that later. Two hundred and sixty-six CHFA mortgage units and no deed restricted units overall. So even though we have four hundred units, there's still not enough units to meet local needs. And we need roughly twice as many units to meet the state's ten percent threshold. Next. This graph here shows our progress over time. Since early two thousand, our housing mix is represented here at the bottom by the colored bands. Blue, gold, green, and I guess I'll call that, we call that heavy. Brown, well, let's go brown on my screen. The brown line is the sum of the lines below. And so what we can see is how the number of affordable housing units in Waterford has grown over time. And the blue line at the top is the number of units that we would need to be exempt from the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. And there's a gap of four hundred or so units comes in. But I think what's also significant on here is that there's really been no progress made over the last twenty years or so. In terms of assisted housing in Waterford. And so all of, and there are no deed restricted units in Waterford. So all of the progress that's been made is either through tenants receiving tenant rental assistance to choose to. Come to Waterford with their tenant rental certificate. Or it's a low and moderate income households who get CHFA mortgages and choose to purchase in Waterford. So that's really the only reason that Waterford has made progress over the last fifteen or twenty years or so. Next. So as it mentioned earlier. There was a community survey, an online survey done earlier this year. I just want to remind the commission. The results from that were, Abby. We had four hundred and fifty-four participants in the survey. The most represented categories were homeowners, ages fifty-five to seventy-nine was the largest age category in terms of responses. People who've lived in Waterford for twenty years or more, predominantly female and predominantly white. So it's, in a sense, fairly representative of the community in terms of the responses that we got. Fifty-seven percent of respondents felt that housing affordability is a concern in Waterford. And fifty-four percent felt Waterford should encourage more housing that people can afford. Sixty-five percent reported spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And that's an even bigger number than what we were finding in terms of housing cost burden. So housing costs are a real issue in Waterford. And fifty-nine percent felt that a time might come when they could no longer afford to live in Waterford because of housing-related expenses. Next. We asked people what kinds of housing they thought Waterford should encourage in the future. And the highest responses in terms of encouragement were for things like veterans' housing or for fifty-five and older. Single-family homes still popular, housing for families, assisted living condominiums. Workforce housing, two-to-four-family homes, one-to-two-story apartment buildings. It's generally got more than fifty percent support. From the respondents to the survey. But three-to-four-story condominiums and three-to-four-story apartment buildings started to be an area where people had some concerns, if you will. About whether or not that fit into the character of Waterford overall. And I think there could be an important takeaway there from that. Abby? We asked people to share some of their thoughts and ideas in terms of individual little comments. There were a number of people who were. Resistant to the concept of housing choices or housing options. They wanted to leave Waterford as is. They didn't want any type of housing diversity or change. They didn't want any apartments in Waterford overall. And then there were other people who felt that requiring that some percentage of any new apartment condominium project to be affordable. Would be a good idea. And several people commented the fact that this type of housing is needed in Waterford, but where it is located. Is really perhaps one of the more important considerations. They talked about the Route eighty-five corridor, Parkway North and South, Town Center, close to shopping. And those types of things as well. So there's, there's diversity of opinions, if you will, in terms of responses to the survey. Next. So as part of putting together the plan. There had a chance to look at what Waterford is doing today and some of the things that Waterford could consider doing over the course of the next five years. Well, the strategies, I'll start to go through them now, Abby. First of all, the overall goal that's being suggested here for the commission's consideration is to. The plan is being prepared to better understand the changing housing needs of the community. Evaluate whether the housing supply is configured to meet those needs. And then provide for a variety of housing choices and opportunities in Waterford. And the following strategies are a way to address these goals. The first page here relates to two separate things. It's probably a, a good idea for Waterford to consider how it's going to address. The concept of housing choice, housing options, housing affordability, not only over the next five years, but even beyond that. They're going to have to, the community is going to have to update this plan every five years. And, and who might be the group or entity that's responsible for doing that? Planning and zoning does the plan of conservation and development, but you also deal with applications on a regular basis. So who should it be? There are two options identified here for consideration, the first of which is. Reinvigorating the housing partnership. Waterford has, housing partnerships were common back in the late nineteen nineties. And Waterford basically became inactive. And this is an entity which other towns are using to address affordable housing issues. And so one of the options that Waterford might consider is to reinvigorate. Housing partnership. Or to establish an affordable housing committee. And sort of the difference between them can actually be who's on them, who appoints, et cetera. But having an entity looking at these issues in the future is probably something that Waterford might want to consider. And then the second concept here is reinvigorating the housing authority. A housing authority is really a very helpful entity that actually can get state and federal money to build. Affordable housing projects to meet the needs of the elderly, disabled, lower-income families. But the town gets to decide and design the project in ways that work for the municipality. So you can actually have a situation where the town gets to guide this effort and that project is created. Guided, managed by the housing authority. But not if we don't have a housing authority. So there's one on the books. It's ordinance two-point-one-zero-zero. But it has been inactive for a while. And so that might be something for us to look at and then investigate ways to promote, create housing authority units. Next. We could also look at ways to enable or incentivize or require the provision of affordable. Housing units as part of new development. It's kind of fortuitous. Excuse me, that I was on the meeting earlier this evening when you had actually an affordable housing development for the commission. They didn't need to be encouraged or incentivized or required. They're providing those affordable housing units. But in, in the future, if we were to add forty units of housing and no affordable housing units. There's a possibility that we could actually fall behind on the affordable housing percentage in town. So one of the things that the commission can look at and the town can look at. Is requiring affordable units in any new residential development or incentivizing it. And there are a number of examples of regulations from around the state where communities have done this. Some communities are also looking at ways that if there is an affordable housing requirement. If people choose not to do it, then they can make a payment of a fee, move affordable units. And possibly even establish a zoning permit today. We went back to the adoption of the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure back from nineteen eighty-nine and. Looked at the number of housing units that had been built. And if we had an inclusionary zoning set aside requirement at that time. We might have at least fourteen hundred additional affordable units and at least one more thorium from eight thirty G. So food for thought in terms of starting to make progress with even small steps. Next. So also recommendations from here, building on the current plan of conservation and development, which Planometrics had a chance to work on with the mission. At that time. And the Affordable Housing Plan recommends that we stay the course in terms of implementing the strategies in the P O C D. Providing for a diverse housing portfolio in Waterford, implementing locational guidelines for multifamily development. I don't think it's appropriate everywhere. You want to have it in places where it's going to fit in best with the character of the community. And. And so on. So there's a map in the plan that identifies potential areas for nodes in the community. And those nodes could be areas to promote or consider housing choices or options. Next. We actually created some maps too, where we looked at the map on the left in green. Takes different factors that might potentially support housing options in the community. These could be things like public water, public sewer, bus routes, proximity to business areas. And also the location of community nodes and areas which are greener, contain more. Factors which could support housing diversity. And the map to the right of that in red are factors which would possibly not support different types of housing diversity. And of course, these are public water. And of course, these are public water supply, water sheds, very sensitive areas, wetlands, watercourses, coastal and inland floodplains, steep slopes areas. These are areas we would want to try to avoid in terms of higher density housing. And between those two, there are some opportunities, if you will, for, for places to look at, to consider housing. And this map on the, on the right, again, we'd identified sort of nodes in Mago Point, Town Center and Quaker Hill. And some of the route, the road corridors on thirty-two eighty-five and Rue One, which could provide. Opportunities perhaps for additional housing diversity in places where Waterford already has housing diversity today. Next. Might not be a bad idea for Waterford to look at updating its multifamily housing regulations, I think. To consider whether there are locations where multifamily might work. Just similar to the application that we saw here tonight, are there other locations that that might work? What is the density and the height allowed? And the different types of approaches? And then also to explore some new options. There's this concept that you may have heard about called missing middle housing. Which communities are considering and go to the next page then. And the concept of missing middle housing refers to the fact that much housing development over the last several decades. Has been either single-family subdivisions at one end of the spectrum. And higher density or intensity multifamily developments at the other end of the spectrum. But there's a lot of housing that falls into the middle and that can include, for example, two-family housing, three-family housing, four-family housing. Townhouse development, as you've probably seen in some other communities. Newer approach called cottage courts or pocket neighborhoods. And then also mixed-use buildings. These are some mixed-use buildings from around Connecticut that have affordable housing units in the top. And retail office or commercial uses on the bottom. And you may actually recognize some of these because they're not far away from Waterford. So there are ways that we could look at the zoning regulations as possible ways to encourage the type of development we want to. Enhance nodes in the community and support housing development, et cetera. Next. And there are also some recommendations in the plan about design review, trying to encourage good design as part of development so it fits into the character of town. There's a recommendation for the concept of establishing a housing trust fund. Which is a vehicle which can be used to receive grants from the state or federal government to see, receive bequests or gifts from Waterford residents. And ways to collect money which could be dedicated to affordable housing. More and more communities around the state are doing this and they're using the money for design. For new developments, which would serve them well in terms of getting state and federal grants. And then some other recommendations about getting configured for managing deed restricted units. Maintaining property tax incentives for the elderly and others, aging in place and livability improvements, et cetera. Next. So I think the requirement you may have recalled from the early slide is the plan be adopted by June one of twenty twenty-two. We have a draft plan document. I think we're looking forward to the commission's comments on this. I think it makes sense at some point in time to share it with the community to get their thoughts and feelings about the plan. Make any additional refinements and then move towards adoption sometime between now and June. So we've got time. And the most important thing I think is to get this right for Waterford going forward. So I think that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mitch may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Glenn? Anybody? Ken, John, Tim? Karen?
Yeah, I mean, my questions aren't so much specific to Glenn. It's, it's more questions related to. Process. As far as account goes, as far as considering the various options. So it's not so much the plan itself, which I think, you know, weighs out a number of different options. But the question is, other than zoning, planning and zoning. Who's involved in the process or who should be involved in the process of going through this and reviewing it? I think it's, it's a multi-faceted review. It's not just something that. I think that is either solely within our purview or should be within our, so within our purview. So. That's my one, but my comment is more an issue of process as opposed to specifics on the plan. I think the plan lays out a number of different options. Consider the questions, how do we go about going through that process?
If I, if I can, you want to jump in, Abby, or?
Oh, you go, go ahead and I'll, I'll follow up.
I looked, I looked like I was on a roll. You didn't want to slow me down. I, I think you're, you're right, John. I think that there's probably about half to maybe two-thirds of the recommendations in here, which could fall to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Things like reviewing the regulations or the updating the plan of conservation and development when that time comes to. Look at these and use those documents to sort of refine the multifamily regulations or look at enabling cottage courts and these types of things. And really, I think the big issue could be the whole concept about. Inclusionary zoning requiring or incentivizing the provision of affordable units. So that would fall to you, but I think you, you probably saw in the early slides that the issue about. Are we going to reinvigorate the housing partnership? Are we going to establish a new group? What are we going to do about the housing authority? You're absolutely right. Those don't fall to the planning. Those are going to fall to others and they're probably important and supportive efforts to whatever planning and zoning does. The commission can't do it by itself. But the community can. And I think once the commission is comfortable with this document or even. At this point in time, if you say, well, you're not a hundred percent comfortable with the document, let's, let's go and road test this with. With residents and other boards or commissions and so on. We've got time to get that kind of input and feedback and, and see where it leads. So you're right. You can't do it yourself and it's going to take a team.
Some, some of the, the work that's been done so far. So for, we, we've shared this with youth services. They were actually, services and senior services were instrumental in helping to craft some of the survey questions and try to get the word out. So, so some of the results of the survey may be. Based on their success in getting respondents to, to join us. But I certainly, I think the selectmen need to, need to be involved. I think there's, you know, RTM members need to, to be sort of. On board here and, and you're right, the general community conversation, how we launch this, how we draw folks in, provide. You know, in-person and virtual opportunities for folks to give feedback on certain elements of the plan. We may need to, you know, through our office and working with Glenn, kind of describe to folks the mechanisms that are in place, a little history on. You know, the creation of, of the housing authority and how, or how things came to be in the ordinance. And why, you know, why they haven't been filled or, you know, sort of what we're enabled to do already. So some of that kind of stuff, mechanics of how we go through it, I think we need to lay out sort of here's the plan of how we will launch. This draft and these concepts out to folks and sort of a way for them to give feedback perhaps on individual elements of it. So I think that's, that's important.
The other thing that strikes me in this, the note, I'll stop. And it's a bit discouraging, but. According to the, the data that Glenn has provided, it's taken at least twenty years. To get to the point where we are today. We are halfway to the goal, the statutory goal. Of the eight hundred or so units that are required. It, it really, you know, without something fairly drastic and substantial. That gap in my mind isn't going to be filled for quite a long time. I mean, tonight we approved one application which. You know, without, at most, I, I think the applicant said twenty percent were market rate units. So that's eight out of the forty. So there's thirty-two at most that may qualify. There's still a long way to go. And that's just one thing that just kind of shouldn't hit me before. But, and I guess that gets to your point, Glenn, also of, you know, incremental steps are steps nevertheless. And, you know, it may not be possible to take a bite of the full apple right now, if you will. To, to, to do it all, but without doing anything, you know, we're going to go backwards, not going to go forwards.
Going to that, to that point that John said, huh, that it was kind of discouraging. It took us so long to get to where we are. Where are other towns? Is anybody met the, the requirement?
Yeah, I think there's, there's really a lot of diversity around the state of Connecticut. I guess I'm not able to chair a screen. I was about to go looking for a turn I have.
Looking to quote it just to be, give us a general idea. So we know we really bottom. We middle.
You mean, you're, you're at about, it must be about five percent of your housing stock. So there are, I think. Probably thirty or forty communities in Connecticut that are exempt. They're above the ten percent. Those are some of the urban areas and inner ring suburbs and other communities that have been working on this for quite some time. I think there are other communities down less than one percent in terms of affordable housing. So you are not at the bottom of the list, et cetera. Actually may be able to bring up a spreadsheet here real quick and tell you what your rank is in the state of Connecticut. And give you a sense of where you're at. So just bear with me for a second. I'll pull that up.
Is this the list that's on page fifteen in our packet that you're talking about? The similar number of housing units?
There's one actually on page eight. So that's a statewide graph. So you, you can see, thank you very much for catching that. I wasn't able to put my fingers on that quickly. Where to go? So when I go and sort by percent affordable. Find Waterford. So you're, you're actually right about in the midpoint. I have you ranked about seventy-eight or seventy-nine out of a hundred and sixty-nine municipalities in Connecticut. So you're, you're, you're in the middle. And I think in terms of your affordable housing percentage, you can see here. The communities that are similar to you in terms of the percent of affordable housing in communities of roughly the same size in terms of, of where they're at. So a lot of communities around the state are looking at this issue, addressing this issue, trying to figure out the strategies that they think will work. Best for them and started to take the first steps. I think as John indicated, we're, we're not going to get there in one four-hundred unit development. And we wouldn't want to. That doesn't, that doesn't work. It makes no sense. But I think a series of small steps over time. Could be a, a way to do it and ways to get more thoriums and ways to get exemptions. And meet the housing needs of the community in ways that make the community stronger.
So I have a question, and this is kind of for the group at large. My parents live out on Cape Cod and in their town, they have a list that you can join as a senior citizen to try to get affordable housing. And I can tell you that my aunt just like joined the list because she wants to move here from Colorado. Do we have anything like that that would show potential developers that there's a need, that there are people waiting? That they would jump at the chance to rent these units if they could have one here in town? Would that be something that like the Affordable Housing Committee?
Typically, the, the lists are kept by like the housing authority, right? Because the housing authority would own or manage the units. So I'm looking right now on page fourteen of your report. And it lists that there are two hundred and ten units of elderly and disabled housing. A hepa is one, Jordan Brook Paris. Twin Haven, Waterford and Victoria Gardens. And I would imagine that, given my experience in other communities, all of those are going to have lengthy waiting lists. And the challenge for that can be, you may have an elderly relative, your, your mom, your dad. Who needs affordable housing now? And the problem is it can be a year and a half or two years before they get to the top of the waiting list. And many people just kind of throw their hands up and say, well, that, that's kind of useless. That doesn't work. So it's such a, a big need these days. Many older people. May not have access to a defined benefit retirement plan. They may not have saved enough. Their lifespan has increased to the point that. They might be outliving their savings and the question is what did they? And sometimes housing authority units are a great catch-all or a safety net for people and it, they, they've got to suffer. For a year and a half to two years waiting for units to become available. So I think. The value of these plans is opening people's awareness of some of the housing challenges that, that people have. People who have housing assume that everybody else has housing too. And the issue is they always, they don't always. And I recently went through a situation with my in-laws where, you know, they, they had some housing challenges and it opens your eyes up to those kinds of issues.
I think Karen, one thing in, in terms of the, the town doesn't have an active housing authority and doesn't have properties that are managed through municipal function. One of the things that happens through youth services and senior services now is folks are connected to. The lists of the developers and the property managers. So for example, we have the, the phone number of the person who is main, managing the list for one seventy-one Roke Ferry Road. And, and so every single time we get a call or another town agency gets a call, we say, okay, we can't put you on the list, but here's how you get on it. Here's who you call. And, and even, you know, the, that, that development that this, this commission approved is already. You know, they're, they're growing their waitlist by the day. There's just, there's a huge, huge demand. So. We're, we're seeing more pressure and more questions come in about folks saying, how do I get on to the list for the limited spaces there may be?
So one of the things that I, I was thinking about, because it really, you have to incentivize developers to want to do this. Because if there's no money in it, they're not going to do it. So I mean, that to me is really the, the key to the whole process because you have to, because you know. I was actually part of, you know, developing that product, process, project there off of Fog Plain Road. When they did Jordan Brook one years ago. And, you know, it's a small building, whatever. And, and, you know, like you said, how many units does it have? It has twenty-six units in it. But the, the incentive was that the reason they could do something like that because there was a subdivision attached to it. You know, so there was money for the developer to make. I know they also did, they have, we have the one fifty-five and older community over off one of the parkways as well. We just need to find, I mean, that's one of the things is that it's got to be, there's got to be money to be made for a developer to want to do it. Because I mean, where, where else does the money come from?
And I think that's, that's a good point, Ken, because I think the developer tonight with their application at eighty percent of the units being. Deed restricted at eighty percent of AMI, the market generally will not support that. The cost of building an eighty percent unit is generally what you can sell or rent it at. So there's no money to be made there. And they're, they're really probably going to look beyond. So they're probably getting some type of financial subsidy from state or the federal government in some way, shape or form. And that can be beneficial because now the units are going to be deed restricted or restricted longer. So that's a good thing. But I think the, getting back to what John said earlier, if we're able to take little bites out of this as we go on. Every time a, a housing development gets built that doesn't have affordable units in it, we're actually going to be falling behind on our percentage. If we were keeping everybody at ten percent going forward, we'd stay at the same percentage we are right now, but we wouldn't be losing ground. And I mean, there's some communities in the state that are going to twelve, fourteen, eighteen, twenty percent. A is a requirement in some situations, but also it's an incentive. I'm working with the community right now that's writing a regulation. It says, listen, our, and, and Westbrook, Abby might be a community to look at. They have a regulation which basically says, okay. Look, if you want to do a multifamily, it's four units per acre. But if you do ten percent, you get five units per acre or whatever the number is. Twenty percent, you get six or eight units per. The number goes up. And the issue is you get more units. So you can make more money. But if all you're going to do is build market rate, we're, we're not as excited about that as we would be. There might be some housing choices in diversity.
I, I think as a zoning commission, I think we should probably, this is my feeling. We should, we probably should be looking at least at some examples of some of the inclusionary zoning that's out there for, for communities similar to where we are. And kind of that mid-range, if you will. You know, I'd like to see, you talk, there's different percentages that one could require. There's the carrot, there's the stick. I'd like to know kind of what is out there and what might, you know, specific language that might fit for us for consideration as a zoning commission. Well, baby step on our part, because quite frankly, looking at the application that was before us earlier tonight, you know, it kind of ran through my head, you know, that, you know, how many of these are actually going to be affordable? And should we have had or should we have some kind of an obligation on the part of a developer to, to designate units as affordable? Because as you've just pointed out, Glenn, each, each apartment complex that we approve or each housing unit that we approve without that, we just, we've now put ourselves behind. Not, we're not staying the same. We're behind.
Yep. And, and I, I wouldn't advocate for the commission to enable higher density or multifamily bonuses all over. The issue would be, are there places in town Parkway North or South or Route eighty-five that's the development tonight? Housing could work and meet our housing needs and support local businesses and be on transit routes and all sorts of things that say, you know what? That could, that could really work. And, and strengthen Waterford overall. So I think those are the types of areas to explore. And we started that dialogue as part of the P O C D. And I think I can certainly share with Abby examples from other communities. Working with Guilford right now and helping them rewrite their zoning regulations. And they've got a lot of different flavors going into their regs they've never had before. Because they think that this could be an opportunity for them.
Well, let me ask you a question on this, on page thirty-eight of the report.
Yeah.
On the, the four-year moratorium.
Yep.
It says, you know, addition, additional investigation may be needed, but if, say, we had the hundred and five plus the five points, right? Did we get forty-eight tonight on Caesar Bill?
Thirty-two units at eighty percent AMI. You get a one and a half points per unit. So you got thirty-two, you got forty-eight points there.
Okay. And then what about Mary Kenny Nursing Home?
Nursing homes, I think, you know, it's interesting.
There were thirty G. Studio units. There's fifty-two studio units. Thirty percent of which, I think there were sixteen units or so that were actually affordable. So we get sixteen studio credits on, on that. And I believe they, and they met the half of those are eighty percent, half of those are at sixty percent.
So how many points do we get there, Abby?
So let me add.
That was quick on the one and a half times thirty-two, but you confused me a little bit with this new formula.
We got twenty-eight for that, I think, Abby, once that's built. So you get, if I understand the math correctly, there's sixteen affordable units. Half of them, I, I guessed are at sixty percent AMI, which is two points per unit. And so that's eight times two is sixteen points. And then the other eight units at eighty percent at one and a half. So that's twelve. So that's sixteen and twelve. It gets you twenty-eight points. And then again, when these units are built and they have to be CO. That's the thing. It's almost like, you know, waiting, you know, for Christmas or something like that in the sense that it could be a year before some of these units here today are ready. But that, when they're ready, you can move ahead. The one thing I do want to state so that the commission knows is that our affordable housing percentages are based on the most recent census. And lo and behold, a month ago, there was a preliminary release of the census housing count. So our percentage is going to reset. And since there was some housing construction over the last decade, our percentage is probably going to go down a little bit. So eventually I'm going to have to recalculate the numbers. It, it, we're not going to lose too, too many units, but the math is going to change in terms of the denominator is a bigger number.
Well, I mean, it would seem to me that if we can meet the, the additional points that are required for the four-year moratorium, that we should do that. Because if we were looking for a housing plan, which I would suggest that we do move forward with the housing plan, it's not going to be much of a plan or our plan if we're forced to accept projects under the eight thirty G. So if we can get the moratorium, but still work on our plan and still incentivize the developers and with the, with the density requirements with the zoning regulations, that would seem to be the best plan, really. Is if we can try to get, get that moratorium.
I think it could. There's just, just a little caveat for the commission. First of all, the, the moratorium points count for units created after nineteen ninety. So if a unit was on the ground before nineteen ninety, you don't get any credit for it. And as if I look through the math, which was the table in the PowerPoint here tonight, we've not added any assisted housing units over the last twenty years, fifteen or twenty years. The only units that have been added in effect in Waterford have been tenant mental assistance and CHFA mortgages. And you don't get credit for those because those are existing units rented to lower income people. They're not new units created. So tonight, and with the other development that we talked about, what did we come up with? Twenty-eight units plus, we think thirty-two at two and a half?
At one and a half.
One and a half, thirty-two. So that's forty-eight and twenty-eight, sixty, seventy-six housing unit equivalent points there. And you need two percent of your housing stock, which is about. Yeah, so it could be a hundred and seventy-three units.
Right. But is it, is it not right that we may have that a hundred and ten already?
Yeah, I'm looking here at the math. You're on page thirty-eight, under four point eight point two. We've got some math here that talks about. I'm going to have to go back and check on the dates those units were placed in service. Let, let's get, I'll, I'll. I'm going to update this as part of this report so that we try to have the most best math we have.
We'll get you the occupancy date so that we can, can calculate through that. And then I think it's, you know, knowing that we may have some large multifamily development coming before the commission fairly soon for consideration. Without the benefit of any other, other standards. So, so those numbers, you know, depending on how long it takes to get there, we can be chasing stuff. So. Yep, so we'll, we'll run through those scenarios.
Okay. And I think we should know where we are on that, that grid system.
Glenn, has there been any chatter around the state that you have heard on the accessory dwelling unit conversation? I know it won't count against the towns, but anybody looking at areas where they would incentivize in some way to get us, get restricted units?
I think Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine actually prohibits you from requiring.
Not requiring, not, not requiring, but incentivizing or allowing or having a way to, to.
I think it's going to be tough, Abby, because I think the, the, the state legislation basically, unless the town opts out, allows them statewide as of January one, twenty twenty-two. So there's no incentive for anybody to do anything. I mean, they will try to rent them at market rate. There's no benefit to them. You, you can't give them a faster permit because it's already going to be a zoning permit by process. So and I think the statute actually contains language says the permit has to be turned around in less than, was it thirty days? Yeah. So it's hard to, to provide an incentive to them.
I was just curious if there have been any opt-out sort of kinds of conversations surrounding that. Only the commission will be reviewing sort of options for, for how to handle that legislation very.
And that's what communities are doing. I think, I would say roughly half are opting out. Only because they feel that the January one, twenty twenty-two deadline is, is coming so quickly that they, they don't have time to do it thoughtfully. So they're opting out simply to be able to get regulations in place. They may continue to opt out with some updated regulations. But again, as perhaps the commission's aware, if you don't opt out by January one of twenty twenty-three, you can never opt out again. You're always going to be subject to state rules. So it's a very bizarre situation. And, and I think it does require some, some careful thought.
So I was actually going to ask about more or less the same question, you know, sort of the, the impact of that, the Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine, you know, on the proposals that you have in here. Because I know that obviously, you know, it came out while this was already in progress. But it sounds like from what you just said, just based on the way the state has set that up and restrictions that they've kind of put on it in terms of like how you can count it towards affordable housing and all that sort of stuff, that it's sort of a, a separate issue from, you know, the options that we have before us in, in the report.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the Public Act was, had some fairly significant components to it. The first one is to really shake up the purposes section in eight dash two for zoning in certain language, which had been in there that communities felt some level of comfort within the past. No longer applies, is no longer in there or has been materially changed. So I don't think it changes too, too much day to day for the commission. But I think if you were going through your regulations, it, the time will come where it really makes sense to update your purposes and bring them into, into line. But I mean, I think October one and another couple of days, some of those provisions go into effect, whether your regs are changed or not. So I think the, the opt-out provisions, which are most significant, there's two of them, one of which is the accessory dwelling unit thing, requires an opt-out on the part of the commission and the legislative body. And getting that in place by January one is, is a challenge. But I think in a, even if your legislative body is a town meeting, I think it could be the selectmen, Abby. So check, check that language out. I don't know which one it is. And then the other provision is parking. It prohibits the commission from requiring more than one parking space for a studio or one bedroom unit. So even though you might have a couple living in a one-bedroom apartment with two cars, you can't require two parking spaces based on what your practices are. So some communities are kind of scratching their heads on that. One tour and have transit oriented locations are saying, well, that, that works for us because that's what we're seeing anyway. But other towns are saying, well, we don't, we don't want park, people parking on the street. I mean, developers, it's in their best interest to build the parking that their tenants are going to need rather than being known as the place that there's no parking. But, you know, the commission can't require it. So what happens if somebody comes along and says, I don't, I don't care. I'm not, I'm not providing those parking spaces. So there are, there is food for thought, I think, in a lot of those provisions. And I might add that the main proponents of the legislative changes are already at work for next session. So there could be more coming.
Any other questions for, for Glenn?
So Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I think.
Thank you.
I think the next step is, and when the commission is ready, it might be to start to share this with other boards, not as a finished product. We're, we're not there yet. We're in the draft stages, but to sort of sense reactions and get feedback, I think it'd help us moving forward. So I'll wait. You can work with Abby on that. Let me know what you see is the next step. So look forward to working with.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm going to check out. Abby, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Okay. Item number seven, commission business, the review of past months and ongoing projects and upcoming projects.
Yep. So past projects review, there's not a huge amount of new stuff to, to report on that part. I'm sure everybody sees the, you know, continued building of the martial arts studio, the office building down at Mago Point. The site work for the Willets Avenue Apartments, that's moving through its next phase in conservation now. So that's, that's coming along. So that those are all, those are all sort of ongoing things that we've, we've discussed. We are doing some more targeted work with the developers from CBU Terrace and Catherine Court for the road acceptance for those two pieces to make sure that we're, we're addressing any provisional services before winter hits. So we're really trying to make sure that we're working with those developers to, to move those road acceptance along as quickly as we can. So the town attorney is involved in that and we'll keep you posted on where we go. In terms of upcoming projects, it sounds like we're likely to have preliminary discussion on the industrial development on Gurley Road. And it seems like the engineer is intending to submit materials to discuss in a preliminary format at the October twelfth meeting as part of our formal preliminary process. Again, the, the Route eighty-five apartments that we had talked about, that two hundred and seventy, thirty-seven units, potential developments at the intersection of Clark Lane, or sorry, Clark Lane, just Cross Road and eighty-five is, is moving through, through wetlands and will be, will be coming through planning and zoning shortly thereafter. We still have work that we're doing internally toward relative to Mago Point. We're starting to prepare. D E C D should be, the state should be opening up a grant process in January or early winter for some fairly significant public grant opportunities for infrastructure. And so we're looking at some of those elements down at Mago Point in terms of economic development opportunities and some of the, you know, sidewalks, lighting, wayfinding, parking, some of those projects have been ongoing discussions for some time. So we're looking at putting together a grant application package that would, would kind of get us going. I have been in conversation with the state concerning the underbridge parking and making sure that the town is securing public parking rights and extending and re-upping a lease that was interrupted for the construction under the, of the Niantic River Bridge. So that's been ongoing and it looks like we're making some good progress there. Which is, which is nice. And then, and again, that's the next phase of the Willets Avenue Apartments will be, will be coming forward. So there'll be a site plan that the, the commission can anticipate relative to that. In terms of, I think we mentioned in our previous five thirty special meeting, but October fourteenth is the next public session for the town center plan. So we definitely want to make sure that we're, you know, getting the word out and, and again, at any additional uses or things that we need to be considering. We want to make sure we're capturing now. And that's what I've got on my list. Do you have any other things that have come up?
Do you have anything for the Route one at the end of Avery Lane? Potential?
Nothing. Nope.
No, just. I was approached on, on the end.
There, well, there's been some very, very preliminary thoughts for a couple of different uses. I've, the two I've heard is gas station and, and certain convenience. And then sort of a mixed use opportunity, some sort of commercial flex space, live workspace, that kind of thing. There's been, but, but outside of a very preliminary conceptual conversation, no more than that.
I ask a question about what, where on Gurley Road are they looking? Where's that development going to be located?
There's an industrial parcel. I think it's twenty-one is the, is the address.
Yeah, it's, it's on the, it's between Gurley, well, it sits between ninety-five and Gurley Road. Just as you get onto Gurley from Oil Mill. Take a right and it's the old cross, cross parcel.
Is it the farm that where the old farm house was?
On the, yes, between, between the two. Yes. Between ninety-five and Gurley Road.
Oh. What's that?
It's very difficult to, to see where it is, right?
I, I, yeah, I mean, and I think there's, there's a fairly substantial concept for build out that they're contemplating. So yeah, it, it.
Yeah, it's difficult.
Right now, it's difficult to see. It would not be in the future. But that's the, the final design of that and kind of where that goes, they're still shaping. So, so we don't have a plan in hand that they've asked us to share. They haven't formally come in with a preliminary application yet. But, but we're understanding from the engineer that they're likely to do so fairly soon.
But you're saying from the on-ramp toward Oil Mill Road, that's the property that way?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, as you're driving down on the right-hand side there.
Yeah, because I know it transitions from Gurley Road to Parkway at that. Okay.
Yeah. This is a large sort of triangular parcel.
So it was the old, it was that, there was an old farm. It was actually something I saw in some Waterford community. But they were just talking about that old farm. That was the historic farm there at some point.
It was the old house in Waterford.
It was what?
The oldest, the oldest house in Waterford.
It was called the Alms House or something or. Okay.
Okay. Anything else on that list, those lists? Any questions, Abby or Mark? All right, let's go with item number eight, administrative review, a quick thing about the approval of end-of-year transfers.
Yep, this is, this is sort of a belt and suspenders case for the auditors. So because the Planning and zoning commission has approval authority over the budget for that portion of our department work, we need an approval to transfer basically any, we call them in-series transfers under a certain amount or under a thousand dollars that commission specifically has to approve of. Things above that go through a process with the Board of Selectment and Board of Finance. And so what's remaining for fiscal year twenty-one to be approved is fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents, which was an overage in the clerical and technical line. And again, there's, there have been some contractual adjustments in the salaries and. And, and that just sort of led to this, this one small overage. And so we have plenty of money in the clerical or in the inspection line to be able to cover that. So we can do the in-series transfer. We have the money to cover, but the auditors need the vote to, to make sure the record is clear.
So I'll move to approve the transfer of the fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents from line ten, one, one, zero, dash, five, eleven, twenty. Inspection to line ten, one, one, zero, dash, five, one, two, one, zero. Clerical and technical for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved in by John, seconded by Tim and Karen. All in favor of that? Hi.
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 Hey, any, no other business, right? Number nine, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded by Tim, motion made by John. All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Everybody.
Attention behind you.
Because she would just go crazy if she hears anything outside.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.